You want to take us to the COVID briefing?
Great. Thank you, Mayor, Council, community members. We are going to start today's work session with a briefing on our COVID-19 response. And we'll be joined by folks from our health departments. We do not have Director Hayden here with us today, but we do have Assistant Director Adrian Stirrup. And so I'll ask Adrian to say a few words and then she'll pass it off to Dr. Esq. Just stir up. I think she may be unmuted.
Okay. Sorry, Spencer, can y'all hear me?
We can.
Okay.
I think we'll come back to Adrian later, but why don't we go right to you, Dr. Esq?
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm going to provide you a brief update in relation to COVID-19. If you could transition to next slide, please. So this is a graph of our new confirmed cases in Travis County. You can see that since about the middle of May, we've seen a steady increase in the seven-day moving average, the yellow line, going from just over 40 cases a day to now a little over 60 cases a day. Yesterday, we saw our largest increase in the number of cases, 118. But we had a decrease on Sunday and Saturday before that. So the net is a relatively neutral effect over the past seven days. You can see that we've had a slight increase in that seven-day moving average as a result, but not much. Again, we'll continue to follow this trend. We are doing a lot more testing now, which I'll get into in just a few minutes. Next slide, please. Now, this slide is showing you the seven-day moving average of our doubling time. You can see that early on, back in in March, we were doubling very quickly. And as time has progressed, we've had a relatively steady increase in that doubling time. So this is the estimation of the time it will take to double the number of cases. Right now, we're at about 44 days. And again, as that cumulative number of cases increases, we can expect that if we have a relatively steady number of new cases, that it will continue to take longer and longer to reach that doubling estimate. So again, this is a positive trend, and we will continue to follow this and report on this as well. This is also on our key indicators dashboard and is updated daily. Next slide, please. Our primary key indicator is the seven-day moving average of the new admissions in the five-county MSA. Again, you can see that we've had a relatively steady increase since about the 22nd of May. And that's, you know, oscillating a little bit now at around 12 cases a day. We did see a substantial increase last week. We had one day with 18 new admissions, but that has come down again. I will say, looking at this data in further detail, about 14% to 15% of cases are less, one day or less in the hospital. And about 50% of cases are five days or less in the hospital. So we do see, you know, a substantial number of cases which are really short admissions to the hospital. But we do have some cases which are much longer, extending out past two months. We're going to look at in further detail at those hospitalization trends and the length of stay. And we hope to report back on that in a week or two. Next slide, please. This graph is showing you three things are our seven-day moving average of hospitalizations, ICU admissions, and ventilation patients. So the blue is the hospital admissions or the heads in beds that are being filled. You can see that we had an increase for quite some time that's come back down again, maintaining steady around 85 to 90 hospital admissions per day in that seven-day moving average. The ICU inpatients have been relatively steady as well. Our ICU or ventilation use has increased a little bit over the past week or so. But again, we still have plenty of capacity in our hospitals and our ICUs and plenty of ventilators right now. I do want to remind the council as well as the public that if people have been delaying care because of concerns about hospital capacity or COVID-19, it's important to understand that there's plenty of capacity. That the hospitals and doctors' offices have enough PPE now that they can take care of people safely. And we really don't want people to continue to avoid necessary preventative care in terms of immunizations and physical exams. We also don't want them to delay when they have other more serious concerns, such as chest pain or shortness of breath or lightheadedness or dizziness. We have seen some increases in emergency care, which indicates to us that there may be a delay going on and continuing. And that may be due to a number of factors, including the financial concerns associated with COVID-19. But it is critical that folks who need medical care, they need ER or hospital care, they seek that out and not delay. Next slide, please. This is an update of our hospital demographics as it relates to hospitalizations in the past seven days. Again, the week I'm going to talk about is the June 1st to the June 7th. You can see from this, we've had a slight decrease in our rate of hospitalization for people who have identified as Hispanic, which has dropped to 58.8%, still overrepresenting our Latinx community. Our individuals who identify as white, non-Hispanic increased to 25%. African-American relatively steady at 11.3%. And our Asian community at about 1.3%. Again, there's a lot of activity going on to target our Latinx community. And we are continuing to work on targeted testing in areas that will be helpful to identify new cases. And we are in discussions as well with the state regarding an offer of support to do further testing, including walk-up testing in some communities that may benefit from further testing saturation. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a couple of slides. Next slide, please. This graph is showing you the payer mix for our hospitalized individuals. I want to point out the blue in the top left, 31.2%. That's the percentage of uninsured or self-pay who have been admitted to the hospital. Again, the estimates that we have range from 14% to 17% of our county is uninsured. And again, this indicates that not only are hospitalizations affecting our communities of color, it's also affecting those at poverty. And again, they are substantially overrepresented in the hospitalizations. And we will continue to follow this trend as well as work on providing a timeline trend related to payer mix. Next slide, please. This graph is showing you the weekly confirmed cases. This is updated from last week. It shows an increase of five new cases compared to last week, so relatively marginal increase. You can see that we've had a steady increase over the past four weeks. And again, we will continue to follow these cases. You know, we can tolerate small increases like this. Our hospitals can tolerate, our ICU capacity and ventilator capacity can tolerate it. But again, we are mainly focused on that seven-day moving average of new admissions, and we really must keep it below 20. And that's going to require all of us to continue to stay engaged in those protective behaviors, such as social distancing, the public wearing of masks, and the personal hygiene, such as washing your hands frequently and not touching your face. Those things are critical for us to reopen things successfully and will continue to positively impact our community if we can continue those efforts. Next slide, please. This is an update of our nursing home and long-term care facility spreadsheet. So you can see that we've added some new nursing homes related to the statewide testing of facilities. We have dropped two additional facilities off the list as they've been cleared. And you can see that we have three additional facilities in gray that have gone three weeks without any new cases, which will fall off next week if that trend continues. Overall, we've had a manageable run of new cases, 14 new in the past week. That's a positive trend, which we certainly hope to continue to see. We are working with a number of stakeholders for a long-term strategy. If you recall, last week, our positivity rates for the mass testing that we did were very low, less than 1% positive. So now we're working on a longer-term strategy to make sure that we're detecting cases in a rapid way so that we can head off outbreaks. But also, we need to make a plan that's sustainable. And part of that discussion is looking at new technology, which may be less expensive as well as less inconvenient for the residents and staff of nursing homes. And this would be things like saliva testing. So we're working with a local company to look at this technology and see if we may be able to apply it in institutional settings, particularly places like nursing homes. Next slide, please. I've got a couple of slides about our testing efforts to give you an update. So since our public testing enrollment began through Austin Public Health, we've had more than 18,000 individuals who've created accounts and undertook an assessment. Since that time, 424, we've had more than 15,000 tests offered to individuals. And as a result of increasing community activity, including Memorial Day, including our protest activities, we've lowered the bar as far as the requirements for getting tested. So now individuals who have been involved in activities that may place them at higher risk, such as public gatherings, can get tested. And therefore, in the past three days, we've had more than 3,900 individuals sign up to get tested. So we are testing record numbers of people over the past week. We are offering tests not only to the public, but to our first responders who've been out at these activities to ensure that we have a large amount of screening and we can detect cases as quickly as possible and mitigate the risk of a large spread based on these activities. Next slide, please. When we look at the results of this testing over the past seven days, you can see that we've had a 9.2% overall rate of positivity, which is a substantial increase from a few weeks ago when we were at around 3% to 4% positive. You can see that there's substantial variation based on race and ethnicity, with the highest percentage positive being our Hispanic population at 17.9%. Again, you know, we saw an increase in our white, non-Hispanic population and our African-American population as well in terms of rates of positivity. But we are still concerned about this trend, which is continuing in our Latinx community and are continuing the advocacy process for not only getting folks tested, but ensuring that they are aware of the availability of isolation facilities to separate themselves from their family, to limit the household spread, and further engagement with employers to ensure that they are providing protections to their employees as well as providing avenues to point them to testing if they become symptomatic or if they're exposed. Next slide, please. And finally, this is a project that the team has been working on to GIS map the testing efforts through Austin Public Health. The data that you're seeing now is just our public enrollment process. We are in the process of bringing in data from community care as well as other stakeholders who are doing testing in the community, such as Austin Regional Clinic and our hospital systems, so that we have all the testing represented on this map. Right now, what this is showing you is the shades of purple are based upon the intensity of testing performed in those ZIP codes. The darker the shade, the more testing that's being performed. The red dots are showing you the size of the positivity in that community, the number of cases. So the larger the red dot, the larger the number of positive cases. This is a live map, and this will be a part of a public-facing dashboard that we're putting together in relation to testing so that members of council, the public, can go and look at their ZIP code. And it will tell you not only the rates of positivity, but also tell you the numbers of positive tests in that particular area. We intend to utilize this data to help us target testing in ZIP codes that have both a high rate of positivity and a low rate of testing so that we can ensure that we fill those gaps adequately and provide appropriate levels of testing with a goal of certainly to get the positivity rate below 10% and hopefully closer to 5% so that we can ensure a uniform approach to testing across the community. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to pass it back to you, Spencer.
Thank you, Dr. Esq. I think we do now have Assistant Director Stirrup on the line, and she was going to provide a few more remarks, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Good morning. Apologies for the technical difficulties earlier. My name is Adrian Stirrup, Austin Public Health, and I'm reporting on behalf of Director Hayden today. Just a few more comments to add to Dr. Esq.'s remarks commenting on the activity of the Social Services Branch with respect to homelessness. All four of our pro lodges are operational and at capacity. We have a few spots reserved for high-risk discharges from the isolation facility. Intercal Care continues to provide onsite behavioral health services at all pro lodges. Our community partners, Downtown Austin Community Court, Front Steps, Salvation Army, and Intercal Care are all working to provide housing-focused case management for those individuals. While we don't have immediate plans to establish a pro lodge five, we're currently watching trends and hospitalizations in community so we can respond accordingly. We continue to work with Community Care and Dell Med on focused testing of the homeless population, both in shelters and encampments. To date, over 500 tests have been administered through focused surveillance testing of shelter residents and staff as well as unsheltered individuals, with fewer than 10 positive cases. The city has deployed the mobile shower trailers, working with the Other Ones Foundation in addition to portable toilets, handwashing stations, and dedicated permanent hygiene facilities. We will continue to partner with the Food Bank and other community partners to provide thousands of prepared meals and shelf-stable food bags every week. Included in the bags are face masks, hygiene supplies, drinking water, pet food as needed, educational flyers, and most recently, Sensus Educational Cards. We continue to partner with the Office of Sustainability on the Eat Program, Eating a Part Together, to provide those meals for unsheltered homeless. Turning it over to childcare, we continue to work with EDD on third-party contracts to support the needs of childcare workers. We continue to update the website to provide links and resources for childcare providers as they begin to expand their operations. And we've also extended that to summer camp facilities. A lot of camps kicked off last week, and we were able to provide some good guidance in terms of getting information out to the community. We continue to partner with KAZI. You may be aware that Austin Public Health sponsors a weekly show entitled Health Talk, and we use that platform to push out information to the community. Currently, we are researching options for clear masks for teachers, infants, and young children. And we continue to provide health and safety supplies. Another thing that we're working on is the unaccompanied minor policy. It's currently being reviewed by city and county legal. And this is a situation for childcare where the parent needs to be hospitalized, but there is no family support for the child. One good piece of news is that our Spanish COVID-19 website is now live as of yesterday. And so this is just one of the many methods that we are implementing in order to make sure that we're reaching the Latinx population most effectively. The branch as a whole continues to provide guidance to EOC operations with respect to language access, language justice issues, and efforts that meet the needs of priority populations. Working in concert with the Equity Office, we're really trying to get to a place that our planning efforts are designed with the least amount of barriers in mind so that we have the most effective response for all involved. I do not have any other comment at this time, and I will pause for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our presentation from Austin Public Health on the COVID-19 update. And we'll open it up for, we stand ready for questions from the council.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Changed computers. Just real quick, I understand it's exciting to see the dashboard going up for testing. Dr. Esq., do you know when that will be up, where people can see both the, that graph, that the chart that showed where cases were being found and where testing was being administered?
Mayor, I believe the goal from the GIS team was by the end of this week. There's still some technical issues they're trying to work through. We are expecting the data feeds from the hospital systems as well as the other stakeholders who are part of our testing collaborative to come in this week to give us a better representation of the actual situation going on in relation to testing.
That's good. By the way, to that team, the two dashboards are up. The one that has the graph, where everybody in the community can watch the new admissions. Those two dashboards that are up are both good. So thank you to the team that worked on those. I understand that the Spanish-facing website information went up yesterday. Where can that be found? Do you know what the URL is for that? Adrian, I think that you mentioned that. I don't know if you know where to find that.
I do. It is, the direct link is http://austin texas.gov/covid19-sp. And I can send that out in an email. All right, great, sir.
Would you do that? Would you send that out, make it easy for people to forward that?
Most certainly.
And then last, I understand that there's going to be a community opportunity that is Latinx-centered on Saturday. Is that, that's open to the public? I think begins, does that begin like at 1:00 in the afternoon? You know?
Let me double-check on that. I had in my mind that it was 10 to 12. We do have an additional planning meeting this afternoon. We're trying to work out the technology kinks to make sure that we can be as inclusive as possible. It is Latinx-centered, and we want to make sure that we have all of the interpretation supports in place. But I will forward the flyer to this group as well, if that's appropriate.
That would be great if you would do that too, and it could easily be sent to us. And then, associated with that, I understand that there's a draft Latinx Strategic Plan and Approach document that the Equity Office may be taking a look at. But I want to make sure that that gets out for the community to be able to look at it relatively advanced, a meeting on Saturday. So if they will want to comment on that, they have the ability to do that. Do you know when the, that draft of the Latinx Strategic Plan is going to be something that is out to the public?
We can certainly make that available today. It has been reviewed by Dr. Esq. as well as the folks in CPIO. And so making a final pass with City Manager's Kronk and ACM shorter, and then we will send that out.
That would be great. Again, if you could send that out to me and all my colleagues as well. So we can circulate that so people have a chance to comment on it. That'd be great. All right, colleagues, does anybody have any questions? I'm having a little technical issues here where I can't see anybody yet because I can't get to the overall screen. So jump in if you want to say something.
Mayor, I had a couple of quick questions. This is Councilmember Ellis.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to see if we could get a reminder of the website for people who want to apply for the free testing. I think that link lives on the main COVID page, but is there another direct link if people still needed to create an account and do their questionnaire to sign up for the free test?
I, it's on the main page. I'm sure there's a direct link, but I don't know what it is. We can certainly get that to you, Councilmember, for you to share.
Okay. I seem to remember if you go to the austin texas.gov/covid19, that I think the link lives there. And is there an estimate of how long it takes? If you are shown that you do need to get a test, how long the wait time would be to be able to go to one of the testing sites?
I can check with the team. In normal circumstances, it's usually the next day. Because we've had such an increase, we've had to increase the hours. So there may be a day or two wait in order to get that testing. But I'll check and see if I can report that back to you.
Okay. And then generally, we have sites all over the city, right? I know there was some issues early on with making sure that there was some availability for the testing sites kind of closer to all districts or, you know, all parts of town.
So currently, we have one testing site for the public drive-through at St. John's. We have one for our public safety, our first responders, and city and county employees. And, you know, there are a number of other sites through Community Care, Austin Regional Clinic, and other partners. One of the things that we're working on for that dashboard for testing is a map where folks can see all the different locations that they can go. We are exploring some other options in terms of adding additional sites or targeted testing, walk-up testing, and we do anticipate to have some modifications of that testing strategy in the coming weeks.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Mayor, this is Ann Kitchen. Should I go ahead? So, Dr. Esq., I have a question about the nursing home dashboard. And this may be something that needs to be checked on because I know that Director Hayden is working on it. But we, you know, we passed the resolution related to nursing home actions, long-term care facilities, actually, for the reporting process. And we had had some discussions with Public Health about putting forward on the dashboard the information, you know, so that we can see the tracking of testing, of strike force, trend line, nursing homes. And actually, as you know, the resolution was long-term care facilities and provided for test of assisted livings facilities as well as nursing homes. So I'm not even, I haven't even seen any data yet about assisted living. So I just want to highlight that. I mean, it's been a couple of weeks now. We still haven't, you know, seen this dashboard. So my office is help, and so I'll highlight that. And so that may be issue for you, for Public Health, that I can follow up with with Director Hayden or I'm not sure who is working on this issue. But I wanted to highlight, we haven't yet seen any of that information on the dashboard, and we don't yet have the nursing home dashboard. So we can take that offline, but I wanted to highlight, I've been trying to work the staff to get that done for a number of weeks now.
Councilmember, I'll certainly visit with our nursing home task force as well as our data team to see where we are in that process. You know, we've had, you know, they've been working on the testing platform, ensuring that the sales force pieces of contact tracing are put together. And, you know, unfortunately, that's the same team that would be working on the additional dashboard. But I'll follow up with the team and get back to you and your staff this week regarding a timeframe for that. And certainly, I can get you the data that you need in the meantime.
Well, it's not that. This is for, I appreciate that. You know, I appreciate that. Just like the other data we're putting on the dashboard, this is important for the public to see. And I had sent some thoughts or some suggestions about which data to track and how to track it. And so it's our data you're tracking, I understand. So it may be an issue of whoever is working on the dashboard itself, putting it together. So, you know, I'm happy to work with you offline. I just wanted to highlight that's something we've been asking. I just wanted to highlight that's something we've been asking for for a number of weeks. And I think it's important for transparency purposes and for families and the people who are working in these facilities to be able to see this data. So, and, you know, if there's anything we can do to help, we did send questions about how you might do it, you know, discuss suggestions. And it was in the resolution that we passed. So, the second question I have is just a confirmation on the, I heard that there were spots reserved pro lodges for people discharged from the ISOFAC facility. And I wanted to say, to say thank you. I know that there was some work done to address discharges from the ISOFAC facility. And that's just in line with the goal for our council and actually for staff. The staff, as Director Hayden has stated many times, is that, that goal is that people, homeless individuals are not discharged to the street from the ISOFAC. ISOFAC stands for isolation facility, and not discharged back to the street from the pro lodges. So, just wanted to say thank you and recognize publicly that an issue that we had experienced related to discharge from the ISOFAC facility seems to be missed here. And so I wanted to say thank you for that and, again, confirm the commitment to making sure that homeless individuals are not discharged back to the street from the ISOFAC facility or from the pro lodges. So thank you for that report. I think that was Adrian. Thank you for that report.
You are welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Again, reminder, we're going to lose Dr. Esq. at all here this morning because they have to make a presentation at the Commissioners' Court. Again, I can't see everybody, so somebody else want to ask questions?
Mayor, I have a few.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Councilmember Tavot. Thanks for the information about pro lodges. I heard this information. Apologies if I missed it. Can you hear me, Mayor? Mayor, I'm not sure what you said.
You get a little closer to the microphone. It's hard to hear you. And now we can't hear you.
Okay, I'll talk louder. Thank you. I wondered if we could get some more specific information about how many individuals have exited the pro lodges and whether, and how many have exited, and where they have exited to. Are they in permanent housing now? What kinds of numbers might you have at this stage?
I can definitely reach out to staff and get that information for you and the rest of the council.
Thank you. And Assistant Director Stroop, did you provide us with a number of how many individuals are being served through the Eat Program? I think you may have, but I didn't capture that number.
I do not have the total number, sir, but I can get that for you, but I know the contract is for 1,000 meals per week.
That was the number I was looking for. And are you finding that the capacity is matching the demand? Or what kind of demand are you having versus the number of meals that we have a contract to serve?
I believe that we're in a good place. One of the decision points that we talked about this week, now that agencies are opening back up, getting a sense of those other agencies like Caritas and folks that provided meals in the downtown area, how they imagine their operations to be, and then we would adjust accordingly. But we are working on extending. We just need to have a good idea of what the need will be going forward as things get back to business.
What was the contemplated end date for the Eat Program?
June 12th was the date, but I've already talked with Edwin, and we are going to make arrangements to extend beyond that time.
Do you know how much capacity? Well, I guess you had $1 million of capacity for all food assistance in the spending framework. And do you have an update for us about the status of the Dell Valley caregiver meals?
I do not, but I know that Edwin is working on that for this afternoon's meeting with the Social Service Cabinet. And I will make sure that we share that information more broadly with the full council.
Okay, great. I think that's my last question for it. Actually, one for Dr. Esq. You referred to the walk-in test sites. What is the time, I think I heard you say that you were working on getting one up. But if somebody doesn't have a vehicle, what is there, what options do they currently have for getting testing?
So, yeah, we're still working on the walk-up testing sites. We have a contractor, a private vendor that we're working on, as well as discussions with the state, the Texas Division of Emergency Management, who's offered to support walk-up testing. There are a number of test sites available through Community Care in private partners, including CBS locations around town where folks can get tested. But, you know, we are still challenged right now by reaching out to those who lack the ability to get to sites to do that. So we are working on that, and I can hopefully get a better timeline on that by Thursday to share with you and council.
Thanks very much.
I have a follow-up, Mayor, it's Delia. I had a follow-up question about those walk-up clinics. Are the Community Care, do we wish, we should have information on our COVID site, is that right?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, you broke up a little bit.
Do we have, for the walk-up, you said that Community Care does have walk-up sites? Do we have that information on our website to direct people to those, to Community Care?
I'll pass this to Adrienne. I believe that we do have links to Community Care's services on our main COVID-19 website.
Yes, under the Community Resources tab, we have that information about Community Care's sites that offer testing.
And are those free or sliding scale, which can mean free for people who can't afford it? You know?
Their testing is free.
Okay.
Our testing is free. Our assessment is free. You know, there are a number of other providers around town that may have some charge to it. Generally speaking, for folks with insurance, the insurance companies, including CMS, are covering with no deductible. So it's, you know, it's important for folks to understand that piece as well. But the, you know, the city and county testing options are all free at this stage.
Okay, and so they do, so Community Care does have walk-up sites, and we have that information on our website.
Right. I don't know about walk-up versus drive-up because they have a number of different sites, and I think there's some variability. So my advice would be, you know, for folks to go to that link and and communicate with Community Care regarding the different services at different sites.
Okay. And is that for Adrian, is that information as well on the bilingual site? About the walk-up sites that Community Care offers?
I do not know, but I will check, and if it is not, I will work with the GIST, which is the Joint Information System, to make sure that it is.
Okay, thank you. Throw my question.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
A bit of a data request, and it seems like y'all already have it. But from your last slide, Dr. Esq., you showed zip codes, and they became darker in shading as they had more cases, and then you had circles that showed the amount of testing in each. I assume, and tell me if I'm wrong, that the ratio, the, if a zip code is darker in shade, but has a smaller and smaller circle, that that might show something concerning where we aren't doing as much testing based on the amount of positivity we're getting. I wonder if y'all could send to us or give us the actual raw numbers and show us if it is actually useful to the public. And so this is where I'm interested also in your input for us to know and be able to know where our ratio is off and where we aren't getting as much testing but are seeing a lot of cases on, and comparing those numbers. Is that a useful number for us to be looking at when we're trying to track where we may not be doing enough testing?
It is, Councilmember, but it's, let me clarify, the, if it's a lighter shade but a larger circle, that means there's more cases with less testing. So those are the areas that we're concerned about. And there does seem to be a concentration of that in southeast Austin. The caveat to that is this is only Austin Public Health drive-through testing that's showing up right now. And there's a lot more testing. There's more than 10 times the number of tests that we're doing, which are being done across the community. So we only have a small piece of the information at this stage. Once we get Community Care's data in and other big players, the biggest player so far has been Austin Regional Clinic. Once we can get their data populated in that, it's going to give us a better idea of where we really have gaps and where to fill those gaps.
And so, so larger circle, lighter shade, is more of somewhere where we recognize we need to do work?
Yes.
Potentially. Once we get the other data. Once we get the other data, then it may become much more useful. Thank you. That would be really, really helpful because I think that helps orient the community and us. Right now, we hear anecdotally from individuals that might have trouble finding testing, or you might look at a map and try to figure out private and public testing sites. But to have that really, those really hard numbers of where are we seeing cases and less testing, I think that will help orient our efforts, and it doesn't matter whose district or whose corner of the city that is. You can see the data and make sure we direct resources there. So I appreciate that. Also, yes, go on.
If you don't mind, I also want to point out that the way this data should not be interpreted is that the risk of getting infected is higher in the areas with the bigger circle. Because what some folks want to do is they want to say, oh, I shouldn't go to that part of town because they got a lot of cases. This tells us nothing about where the people were infected. It only tells us where they live. And, you know, it should not be used to determine what parts of town are safe versus not. That's not what this data is showing, and I just want to make sure that was clear.
Absolutely. And it's unfortunate that really what it shows is segregation of our own city that we can identify so clearly where there are people that are at higher risk live in particular places. But given that, we should use the data that we have. And then the other piece of information that I know y'all are working on, and I'm interested in when when or if we think we can get better information is amongst those hospitalized, how many of them are coming from Spanish-speaking communities? Because I'm glad we put up the Spanish-speaking site, but how much do we know that that is part of, a core of the issue, or how much of it is coming from construction in particular? Those, do we have a better handle on that kind of information?
So, Councilmember, we're working on adding the preferred language piece to the case investigation form so that we can track better who are, you know, who's using Spanish versus another languages as the primary language in the household. The team is also working on helping determine community spread versus household spread so that we can have some better data to determine where the issues are. It does seem like, you know, we are getting an index case within a household, and then it's spreading easily to family members within that household. You know, we also know that as the size of the household grows, so does the percentage in poverty. And, you know, we have something like 25, 27% of households that have seven or more people are below the poverty level. And there's certainly a correlation based on increasing size of households. So that's a challenge for us, and this is why we're really encouraging the community to, if they do get sick, to separate themselves, to use that isolation facility so we can break that cycle of that household transmission.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, someone else want to ask any questions? Okay. Dr. Esq., Adrian, thank you so much for being with us today.
Mayor, I wanted to say one other thing.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank you both, and again, thank the staff. Y'all have been consistently doing a lot of really difficult work, really fast, and 24/7. So, we, the questions we ask are designed to serve the community better and to make things public. But we all recognize how hard you're working, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Mayor? I also wanted to thank our staff and also ask if we can please be sent the slides so that we can share them with the community.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I wanted to see if we could get sent the slides.
If you could send out all three slides, all three presentations to the council members. Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, let's go on then to the next briefing that we have. This is the briefing on redistricting. Manager?